I'm going to call the annual meeting to order at this time. And I would like to have Anita read the warrant first, I guess, tonight, please.
Good evening. To either of the constables of the town of Rutland and the county of Worcester, in the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are hereby directed to notify and warn the inhabitants of said town qualified to vote in elections and in town affairs to meet at the Glenwood Elementary School Auditorium at 65 Glenwood Road in said Rutland on Saturday, the seventh day of May, 2022, at four o'clock in the evening, then and there, to vote on the following articles.
Thank you, Anita. At this time, I'd ask everyone to stand as we're going to do the National Anthem. And I would like, I would like to have Jerry McAllister, the president of the Rutland Sportsman's Club, be the honor tonight.
Thank you, sir. We can think loud. Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave. Thank you, sir.
At this, will you please stay standing, and we'll do the salute at the same time, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, an imperial republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
We'll stay standing, as this time, I will call, the invocation for tonight will be Kathy Highland, a deacon of the First Congregational Church.
Our heavenly Father, we thank you for this time together, and hope that each of us really listens to everyone's concerns. May each of us around this room hear what each of us are saying. Enable us to acquire and understand the accurate information we need and its implications, so we can make informed decisions before voting. Help us to hear the complete message being spoken, and not be distracted by things within or outside this room. Help us avoid thinking of what we want to say when we should be instead listening, understanding, and absorbing what is being communicated. Please be with us this afternoon, and always. Amen. And while we're at it, happy birthday, Scott.
Thank you very much. Well, thank you. Thank you, Kathy, and thank you, Jerry, for doing that. At this time, just some housekeeping rules. Everyone should have a monitor in front of them. We don't have paper ballots anymore. This is how we vote, and it'll make a little bit of our, few of our two-thirds ballots a little bit easier to do. At this time, do we need to turn these things on? No. Right? Do we have to turn these on?
No, I think there should be. You're going to do a test.
Yeah, we're going to do a test, and then we're going to know about how many people are here, and then we're going to do it. And we have a, right, we don't need to turn it on. Is that correct, Anita? At this time, I'm going to open the ballot, and we're going to, all those that would like to be home by seven o'clock tonight, vote yes. All those that think I won't be home by seven, please push no.
Does that leave here, or?
Drive home, or?
Leave here.
All those ballot who wish, all those ballot who wish, I declare the ballot box closed. We have a total of 60 votes. Fifty-five agree with me that will be home by seven. Darren has five friends that don't think we will be home by that. We're going to do another one, and this one is, if you think the Celtics are going to win tonight, please vote yes. If you think the Celtics are going to vote no, please vote no. Oh, if the Celtics are going to lose, please vote no. All those ballot who wish, all those ballot who wish, I declare the ballot box closed. Thirty-six yeses, 20 nos. So, I think we got, is there any way to know how many people are here? Is there around 56?
I think it's a little more than that.
Mr. Matt, could you ask the ladies out there checking in, how many people have registered? Please? Thank you. We just want to make sure the number's relatively close. You don't have to vote every time, but I don't want to have to be, you know, 25 people here and there, 56 voting. Thank you. Seventy-ish. That's, so we're relatively close. Thank you. At this time, I would like to call Leah Rupp to talk briefly of something.
Hi, guys. I'm Leah Whitman, one of the select board members, but also serve on the Master Plan Steering Committee. I just wanted to point everyone's attention to a survey that we have. It's a Phase Two survey. Some of you may have taken a survey about a year ago. This is a new one. It covers town services and facilities, cultural and historical resources, and transportation and circulation around town, and schools. So, we really need your input. You can pick up one of these papers out there, scan the QR code, go on, do it, and we would appreciate it. Also, on Wednesday, June 8th, six o'clock in the Blair Room in the library, there'll be a public forum where we'll start going through the results of the master plan survey, thus, master plan work thus far. So, we'd love to have as much participation there as possible. Again, that's Wednesday, June 8th, six o'clock, in the Blair Room of the library. Thank you.
Other than that, I think we're going to get, I'd like to introduce my folks up here. On my left is Town Clerk Anita Carlson. Beside Anita is Lauren Goldberg from our legal counsel. Beside Lauren, in the blue shirt, is Gary Kellerher, acting TA. Beside Gary is Lyndon Nichols, chairman of the Select Board. Beside Lyndon is Carol Willie. Oh, she used to be a Willie, right? So, I was close, all right? Carol is vice chair of the Selectmen. You've got Leah Whitman, and you have Skip Clark on the end down there. To my right, we have Karen Norwell, chairman of the Finance Board. Beside her, we have Tom Rocheller. Beside Tommy, we have Lynn Winneker. Beside Lynn, we have Peter O'Malley. This might be the first time I've ever got that one right, so. Beside Peter, we have Ted Purcell, and bringing up the rear is Darren Ross down there on the end. So, let's get this ball rolling with this. Article one, to hear the annual meeting, to hear the annual report of the town offices and committees.
I move that we hear the annual reports of the town offices and committees.
Is there a second? Is there a recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends favorably on this item.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Hearing none, all those in favor, please hit the green button. All those opposed, hit the red button. All those ballot who wish, I declare the ballot box closed. Thirty-eight yeses, four nos. I declare it closed. At this time, Lyndon, would you please come up?
All right. Thank you. Good evening. It's my privilege to present the annual report for July 1st, 2020, through June 30th, 2021. At this time, I'd like to ask any members of the Blair family if they'd like to join me at the podium. Thanks. So, I met Cleese several years ago, much before I moved to the town of Rutland, when he approached me at my, my job regarding the financing of the library, which, obviously, that was successful, and later on, we went on to discussing the DPW building and the combination of the fire and police into the safety building. After moving into town, I worked with Cleese on the Finance Committee, got to know him fairly well. He's always been extremely active in the community. He's always been a very charitable individual. He and Nancy worked very hard at the church, the Catholic Church, and supported them. He supported, when I was on the CERT team, we needed equipment on a couple occasions, he, he jumped right into action and provided the equipment, and he's, he's been very charitable, but, and very anonymous in his charitable causes. And I've heard stories of all the families he's helped, he's helped throughout the years. So, I'm very proud to dedicate the annual report. The town of Rutland dedicates the annual report to the memory of Cleveland Blair Senior, who passed away on December 4th, 2020. Mr. Blair was a big part of the community during the many years he and his family lived in town. Mr. Blair served on several communities, including the Finance Committee. He is fondly remembered for his generosity through his many donations and for the help he provided to our towns' families. So, I'd like to present the town report to his family. Thank you very much. Thanks. And this is your copy. And I have one more presentation. So, if I could ask our town accountant, Dan Haynes, to come to the podium? Yeah, we're out of money. So, back in 1998, at a time when Cleese Blair was the chairman of the Finance Committee, we hired a young and enthusiastic town accountant. And today, 24 years later, unfortunately, we'll be saying farewell and thank you for 24 years of service to a young, still young and enthusiastic accountant. So, just, I just wanted to go through a few changes that Dan has seen through his career with the town that Anita provided me with. When Dan started, there were 5,900 people in Rutland. Today, we have 9,400. Dan has attended over 80 town meetings, 18 different Select Board members, God bless him, two town clerks, two treasurer collectors, six FinCom chairman, chairpeople, God bless him for that as well, four police chiefs, three fire chiefs, and he also saw the transition of a three-board Select Board to a five-board member, the selection of our new, our first town administrator, and during that time, he saw the building of the Central Tree Middle School, the library, the public safety, DPW, and Glenwood Elementary School. So, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank you, Dan, for your service. I've never heard a bad word about Dan. He is the epitome of customer service and has been a great friend for the town of Rutland. So, with that, I'd like to present this certificate of appreciation. This certificate is hereby presented to Daniel B. Haynes for outstanding dedication and commitment to the town of Rutland. Thank you for safeguarding the financial records of the town and assuring the town is in full compliance with uniform municipal accounting systems for the past 24 years. Sign that.
Thank you, Lyndon. We're going to move on to Article two, to see if the town will vote to fix the salaries or compensation of elected town offices for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2022, in accordance with Section 108, Chapter 41 of the general laws as amended or take any action in relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to fix the salaries or compensation of elected town officers for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2022, and in accordance with General Laws, Chapter 41, Section 108, as amended, as printed in Article two of the warrant.
Second.
Motion made in second, recommendation of the Finance, please.
Finance Committee recommends favorably.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Hearing none, at this time, all those in favor, please vote yes. All those opposed, vote no. All those ballot who wish, declare the ballot box closed. There are 62 yeses, three nos. I declare the ballot successful. Moving on to Article three, to see if the town will vote to raise such sums of money or utilization of free cash as may be necessary to defray the expenses of the municipal departments for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2022, and determine whether the town will appropriate money therefore to be provided by taxation or by appropriation from available funds or take any action thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $8,273,957.54 and transfer $110,362 from free cash to defray the expenses of the municipal departments for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2022. All is set forth in the column titled Finance Committee Budget on the handout titled 2023 General Fund Budget Summary.
Recommendation of the Finance Board?
Finance Committee recommends favorably on the article.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Hearing none, all those in favor, please vote yes. All those ballot who wish, I declare the ballot box closed. We have 60 yeses, we have two nos. Moving on to Article four, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate a sum of money to defray the expenses of the Southern Worcester County Regional Vocational School Assessment for the fiscal year beginning July 1, and determine whether the town will appropriate money therefore to, to provide taxation or appropriation from available funds or take any action in relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $751,553 to defray the expenses of the Southern Worcester County Regional Vocational School Assessment for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2022.
Does this motion receive support?
Second.
Motion made in second, recommendation of the Finance, please.
Finance Committee recommends favorably.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please vote yes. All those opposed, please vote no. If any of you want to come up and discuss things as necessary, we're going to come to this podium directly in front of us, and we will have to state your name and address for the town clerk to do that. Anybody else choose to vote on this particular article? I will declare the ballot box closed. 63 yeses, five nos. Motion carries. Moving on to Article five, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate a sum of money to defray the expenses of the Wachusett Regional School District minimum local contribution for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2022, and determine whether the town will appropriate money therefore to provide by taxation or by appropriation from available funds or take any action in relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate $8,123,913 to defray the expenses of the Wachusett Regional School District minimum local contribution for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2022.
Does this motion receive support?
Second.
Motion made in second, recommendation of the Finance, please.
Finance Committee recommends favorably on this one.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please vote yes. All those opposed, vote no. I declare, is there any further discuss, everybody voted who wish, declare the ballot box closed. 63 yeses, four nos. It carries. Moving on to Article six, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate a sum of money to defray the expenses of the Wachusett Regional School District Debt Services Assessment for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2022, and determine whether the town will appropriate money therefore to be provided by taxation or by appropriation from available funds or take any action in relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to raise and appropriate $522,332 to defray the expenses of the Wachusett Regional School District Debt Service Assessment for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2022.
Does this motion receive support?
Second.
Motion made in second, recommendation of the Finance, please.
Finance Committee recommends favorably.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Hearing none, all those in favor, please vote yes. All those opposed, vote no. All those voted who wish, I declare the ballot box closed. 58 yeses, six nos. Motion carries. Moving on to Article seven, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate a sum of money to defray the expenses of the Wachusett Regional School District Transportation Assessment for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2022, and determine whether the town will appropriate money therefore to be provided by taxation or by appropriation from available funds or take any action in relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate $1271,944 to defray the expenses of the Wachusett Regional School District Transportation Assessment for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2022.
Second.
Motion made in second, recommendation of the Finance, please.
The Finance Committee recommends favorably on this article.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Hearing none, all those in favor, please vote yes. All those opposed, would vote no, please. All those voted who wish, declare the ballot box closed. 56, 58 yeses, 10 nos. Motion carries. Moving on to Article eight, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate a sum of money to defray the expenses of the Wachusett Regional School District Operations Assessment for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2022, and determine whether the town will appropriate money therefore to be provided by taxation or by appropriation from available funds or take any action in relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate $4149,963 to defray the expenses of the Wachusett Regional School District Operations Assessment for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2022.
Does this motion receive support?
Second.
Recommendation of the Finance, please.
Finance Committee recommends favorably.
Is there any discussion on this article?
Sherri Hager, Olivia Lane. I'm just looking for clarification. The budget line, it says for Wachusett, the budget request was $14,107,967, and the Finance Committee budget line is $14,068,162. Can you explain to me which number we're voting on tonight?
You're voting on the town finance committee budget. The town administrator budget, he put in an incorrect amount.
So, this is the full budget?
This is the full budget. There were no changes made to the, the amount that the school came to us and asked for.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any other discussion?
Joe Becker, 18 Prestige Drive, I think it's the second. A question here on the operations assessment, how much of the school budget is being offset by one-time aid, ESTER funding or other federal estate aid that may not necessarily be available next year?
Is that a Finance question, or is that a Superintendent question?
It should be Superintendent.
Superintendent standing and walking this direction, so hopefully he can give us a wonderful answer.
Superintendent, do you want to call? It's as long as it'll be.
Just yell louder, please. Think we're your kids.
Okay, so, just your question, Joey, so really, what we're, what we've done this year is that ESTER funding and so forth has gone, they've basically gone to fix things like HVAC systems and so forth, by TPD, those types of things. They're not necessarily getting rolled into the overall budget. You have one-time funding that we use every single year, such as a circuit breaker and so, and so forth.
And those are our offsets, and those are used annually.
Okay. This, this.
Yeah, so you're, so this isn't going to build a structural deficit for us.
That's all I wanted to know.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is there any further discussion on this article? Is there any other further discussion on this article? Is there any other further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please vote yes. All those opposed, would be no. All those voted who wish, I declare the ballot box closed. 54 yeses, eight nos. Motion carries. Moving on to Article nine, to see if the town will vote to accept the Wachusett Regional School District Agreement as amended on March 7, 2022, by the Wachusett Regional District School Committee, also on file with the town clerk or make any action in relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to approve amendments to the Wachusett Regional School District Regional Agreement as voted by the Wachusett Regional School District Committee on March 7, 2022, which amends, amendments are also on file with the town clerk.
Does this motion receive support? Motion made in second, recommendation of the Finance?
Finance Committee recommends favorably on this.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by yes or no, please. All those voted who wish, I declare the ballot box closed. 50 yeses, 13 nos. Motion carries. Moving on to Article 10, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate a sum of money as may be necessary to defray the expenses of the debt services for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2022, and determine whether the town will appropriate money therefore to be provided by taxation or by appropriation from available funds or take any action in relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate $154,796 to defray the expenses of debt service for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2022.
Does this motion receive support?
Second.
Motion made in second, recommendation of the Finance, please.
The Finance Committee recommends favorably on this.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please vote yes. All those opposed, would be no. All those voted who wish, I declare the ballot box closed. 62 yeses, four nos. Motion carries. Moving on to Article 11, to see if the town will vote in a re, vote to raise and appropriate a sum of money to operate the water/s sewer department for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2022, or take any action in relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to pursuant to G, Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53 F 1/2, to appropriate the total sum of $2,756,922.69 for the operation of the water sewer enter- and sixty-nine cents for the operation of the water sewer enterprise for the fiscal year beginning July first, 2022, with sixty thousand dollars from water and sewer retained earnings and two million six hundred and ninety-six thousand nine hundred and twenty-two dollars and sixty-nine cents from the fiscal year twenty twenty-three receipts of the enterprise fund to be extended, expended as set forth below. Salaries, four hundred and ninety-three thousand one hundred and ninety-seven dollars and sixty-eight cents. Expenses, one thou- one million five hundred and twenty-five thousand three hundred and two dollars and ninety cents. Debt principal, three hundred and fifty-six thousand two hundred dollars. Debt interest, one hundred and twenty-eight thousand ninety-one dollars and thirty cents. Reserves, sixty thousand. Indirect charges, one hundred and ninety-four thousand one hundred and thirty dollars and eighty-two cents.
Does this motion receive support?
Second.
Motion made in second, is there a recommendation of the finance, please?
Finance committee recommends favorably on this.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please vote with the yes. All those opposed would be no. All those voted who wish, I declare the ballot box closed. Sixty yeses, four nos, carries. Moving on to Article twelve, to see if the town will vote to appropriate from a sum of one hundred and six thousand six hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars for the water sewer retained earnings, free cash, for the purpose of paying the fiscal year twenty twenty-two debt services obligations resulting from the permanent borrowing of water and sewer infrastructure improvement, or take any action in relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of one hundred and six thousand six hundred and thirty-two dollars from water and sewer retained earnings, water and sewer free cash, for the purposes of paying the fiscal year twenty twenty-two debt service obligation resulting from the permanent borrowing for water and sewer infrastructure improvements.
Does this motion receive support?
Second.
Recommendation of the finance?
Finance committee recommends favorably on this article.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Hearing none, all those in favor, please vote yes. All those opposed, please vote no. All those balloted who wish, I declare the ballot box closed. Sixty-one yeses, three nos, motion carries. Moving on to Article thirteen, to see if the town will vote to appropriate a sum of money from the P E G Access and Cable Related Fund to fund the P E G Access and Cable Related Operations for the fiscal year beginning July first, two thousand and twenty-two, and take, and further, that at the close of the fiscal year, to provide that all unspent funds shall be closed back to the P E G Access and Cable Related Funds, or take any action in relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate one hundred and seventy-three thousand six hundred and eighty-four dollars from the P E G Access and Cable Related Fund to fund P E G Access and Cable Related Operations for fiscal year beginning July first, twenty twenty-two, and further, at the close of the fiscal year, to provide that all unspent funds shall be closed back to the P E G Access and Cable Related Fund.
Does this motion receive support? Uh, recommendation of the finance, please.
Finance com- committee recommends favorably on this.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Hearing none, all those in favor, please vote yes. With, all those opposed would be no. All those balloted who wish, I declare the ballot box closed. Fifty-two yeses, eight nos, motion carries. Moving on to Article fourteen, to see if the town will vote to appropriate a sum of money for the fiscal year beginning July first, two thousand and twenty-two, for the capital equipment, buildings, facilities, and other projects, and the authorization of the Board of Selectmen to take by eminent domain purchases or otherwise acquired any fees, easements, or interest in land necessary, therefore, to determine whether the, the funding shall be provided by the tax levy, or by transfer from available funds, by borrowing, or by any combination of these methods, and further to authorize the Board of Selectmen to apply for, accept, and expend any federal or state grant funds or private donations that may be available for such capital improvements, and to the, to take such other actions as may be necessary to, um...
Effectuate.
Effectuate, to vote, take in here under, or take any action in relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to appropriate seventy-three thousand five hundred and ninety dollars from free cash for the replacement of electric switch gear at Naqog Elementary School, and ninety-one thousand one hundred and thirty-five dollars from water and sewer retention earnings, free cash, for the purchase of sewer service truck with plow for the fiscal year beginning July first, 2022.
Recommendation of the finance?
Finance committee recommends favorably on this.
Is there any discussion on this article?
Is it working? No.
Just speak loudly, please.
Carol Martens, Pleasantale Road. I just have, I, when I see the word eminent domain, I get really nervous. Can you maybe explain just a little bit more what's going on here?
Mr. Moderator. So the article in the warrant is written broadly to allow the town to take whatever action is needed to accomplish the particular projects that are identified. In this case, there is no authorization to acquire land, whether by eminent domain or anything else. The only thing that's being done is the appropriation of free cash for the replacement of the electrical switch gear, and then the transfer from water and sewer retained earnings for the purpose of acquiring a sewer service truck with plow.
Is there any other discussion on this article?
Joe Becker, eighteen, Prestview Drive, also Vice Chairman of the Capital Planning Improvement Committee. I just wanted to let everyone know that the Capital Planning Improvement Committee did recommend both of the items that, that were included in the motion. I did want to ask a question, however, because among our recommendations, there were actually six, and they were recommended in order of priority, and the priority was determined by the state criteria form that the C I P C uses to determine which projects that come before us actually get recommended out. So, um, the first one that came in, in number one priority was a breathing air compressor for the fire department. The second one was wood house structural repairs. The third one was the store truck, which was included in the motion. The fourth one was a four-ton, a four-ton dump truck and sand dirt with a plow. Uh, the fifth one was the second half of the woods house roof repair, and then the sixth one was the switch gear, which was also included in the motion. So the question I have is, how was it determined, even though we recommended favorably on both of these items out of the C I P C, my question is, why the sixth item was included in the ones that actually got funded versus the one that came number one in the priority ranking from the C I P C?
These were the only two that were given to the finance committee for this. This was the only information that the finance committee received.
I, I guess I'll, I'll move that over to the Board of Selectmen then, because the, the memo from the C I P C did go to the board, so, um, I'm wondering why, though, those didn't reach the income.
Mr. Becker? Yes, sir. The balance currently of the ARPA funds from the last year's allotment is to roughly two hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars. Obviously, we had to look at the cost, the cost of the other items that you put in, in conversations with Mr. Sekman. We understand that it was hoped that all of the items you did put in for could be used and paid for by ARPA funds until that such funds were exhausted, and then the possibility of, of getting a bond for the balance. So the switch gear, although it was number six on your list, that's an ongoing problem. As you know, we've discussed this in years past, and obviously the other piece is coming out of retained earnings. So out of the, the one point, roughly three, three-five, that was awarded to the town in August of twenty-one, in the B O S approved total of one point one, it leaves us a balance right now of two hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars, roughly. These are whole numbers. We will not get another allotment of one point three until this coming August from both county and local aid.
So my follow-up question, maybe I misunderstood the motion, but I thought the motion had the replacement of the electrical switch gear coming from free cash versus ARPA.
That is correct. That is correct.
Then, right. We, we have very limited free cash, Joe, so we...
It's two hundred and thirty, right?
Right, so, so this is what they, we could afford now, and then we want to look at the other items on the ARPA funding in August.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
If I, if I could through the, I, you know, regardless, we, we recommended it, um, so that piece is fine. I guess I, I would just ask that the town consider the priority that the C I, that comes out of the C I P C, because, you know, the price difference between the item that was recommended and the compressor, which was the first priority, I, I think we had free cash to be able to pay for that number one priority item, even though it was a little bit more, the free cash was still available to do it. So I would just ask in the future that the, the priority ranking be considered, you know, when the items are brought forth to the town.
Is there any other discussion on this article? Is there any other discussion on this article? Is there any other discussion on this article? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by voting yes. All those opposed would be no. Uh, this is actually two-thirds of a vote as well, and we will work off the numbers here on the screen.
No, no explanation.
I'm just telling you what it says on my piece of paper here.
Mr. Majority, can I explain the use of free cash and retained earnings?
I have been corrected. It's only majority. All those voted who wish, I declare the ballot box closed. Forty-six yeses, twenty nos, um, motion carries. Moving on to Article fifteen, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to apply for, accept, and extend any grants or donation from state or federal government or private agencies, and individuals or institutions, or take any action in relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to apply for, accept, and expend any grants and, or donations from state or federal governments or private agencies, individuals, or institutions.
Motion made in second and recommendation of the finance, please.
Finance committee recommends favorably on this.
Oh, any, is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? All those in favor, please use your green button. All those opposed, please use your red button. All those in vouted who wish, declare the ballot box closed. Sixty-six yeses, zero nos. Moving on to Article sixteen, to see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into contracts for goods and services with duration in the excess of three years under the provisions of G L. Section thirty B, Section twelve B, or take any action in relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into contracts for goods and services with duration in excess of three years under the provisions of G L. Thirty B, twelve B. Thank you.
Motion made in second and recommendation of the finance?
Finance committee recommends favorably on this article.
Is there any discussion on this article?
I'm Desiree, Desiree Mangum, Ten Arlene Drive. What kind of contracts are we looking at extending beyond three years?
Lyndon, can you help with that?
Um, basically, it's, it's any, and any contract that the board, that the town enters into, so even like the contracts with the roadwork and everything, um, it just allows us flexibility to go, enter into ones that take three years or more. So it covers all, all town contracts.
Okay, so, does that keep us from voting, let's say there's, um, for example, on the cap, maybe the, um, on the cable contract, for example, if we, if the town wanted to vote to, um, decrease the, the money we're paying toward cable, um, that, we have to wait until that contract is up?
No, 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 I mean, so the town still votes on the projects and everything, the town, that, that the, the residents, we, we just have the authority to sign contracts for the work. So once it's been approved, then the board has the authority to enter into contracts.
And how long are those contracts usually? Five years, six?
It depends on the project, so, um, I'm not really sure the longest one, long contracts usually don't go any further than...
Mr. Moderator, please. Typically, without, um, in a vote like this for goods and services, the outside length of a contract is three years. So if you want to be able to take advantage of a better interest rate, or a better payment plan, or anything like that, then it would go, um, th- this would allow that to happen. Just a reminder that this would only occur at a posted meeting of the select, select board in, uh, held in the open meeting, um, and again, it's, it's, um, it's just for goods and services.
Okay, thanks, that, that answered my question, thank you.
Is there any other discussion? Is there any other discussion? Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by yes. All those opposed would be no's. All those balloted who wish, I declare the ballot box closed. Sixty-six yeses, four nos. Yes wins. Moving on to Article seventeen, to see if the town will vote to appropriate all funds which become available in the fiscal year twenty twenty-three from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Department of Highways, Chapter ninety, bond issue to proceed to be used by the D P W for the repairs and maintenance of town roads in conformance with Massachusetts general laws, and further, the town vote to raise said appropriations by borrowing or, and authorization, the town treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen to issue bonds or notes for the town, therefore, in anticipation of the receipt of said state aid, or take any action in relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate all funds which become available in fiscal year twenty twenty-three with Commonwealth of Massachusetts Department of Highways, Chapter ninety, bond issue proceeds to be used by the D P W for the repair and maintenance of town roads in conformance with the Massachusetts general laws, and further, that the town vote to raise and appropriate by the borrowing and authorization of the town treasurer with approval of the Board of Selectmen to issue bonds or notes of the town, therefore, in anticipation of receipt of said state aid.
Does this motion receive support? Recommendation of the finance?
Finance committee recommends favorably.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Hearing none, all those in favor, please just signify by green yeses. All those opposed would be no, reds. All those voted who wish, declare the ballot box closed. Sixty yeses, five nos, motion carries. Moving on to Article eighteen, to see if the town will vote to amend the town zoning bylaws by amending texted references in Article three, using regulations in Section eight A, nine, and Section eleven A, and the article number nine, Administration and Enforcement, Section sixty-four B, three, as set forth in the handout titled May seventh, two thousand and twenty-two, Annual Town Meeting Zoning Bylaw Technical Correction, Article nineteen, uh, also on file with the town clerk, or take any action in relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I moved that the town vote to amend the town zoning bylaws by amending text references in Article three, Use Regulations, Section eight A, Section nine, and Section eleven A, Article nine, Administration and Enforcement, Section sixty-three, B, uh, sixty-four B, three, as set forth in the handout titled May seventh, two thousand and twenty-two, Annual Town Meeting Zoning Bylaw Technical Corrections, Article eighteen, also on file with the town clerk.
Does this motion receive support? Does? Is there any discussion? Is, uh, finance, please.
Finance committee recommends favorably.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? This will be a two-thirds vote, and I will run off the tally machines that we have. All those in favor, please vote green yes. All those opposed would be no, red. All those opposed would be no red. All those voted, all those voted who wish, I declare the ballot box closed. We have 51 yeses, 15 nos. That is a two-thirds majority. It passes. We're moving on to Article 19, to see if the town will vote to pursue to the provisions of GL Section 44, 53E and a half, as most recently amended to establish the fiscal year 2023 spending limits for the revolving funds listed in Section 6 of the bylaws of the same name and all as set forth below with such exemplizations, limits to the application of the each year, fiscal year until such time as town meeting votes prior to July 1st in any year to change the same for ensuing fiscal year, providing however, that at the request of the entirety authorized to expend such funds, the Board of Selectmen with the approval of the Finance Committee may increase such limits for the fiscal year only as set forth below. You all have that printed in front of you.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote pursuant to provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53E and a half, to establish fiscal year 2023 spending limits for revolving funds listed in Section 6 of the bylaw of the same name as set forth in Article 19 of the warrant, with such expenditure limits to be applicable for each fiscal year until such town, time as town meeting votes prior to July 1st in any year to change the same for the ensuing fiscal year, provided however, that at the request of the entity authorized to expend such funds, the Board of Selectmen with the approval of the Finance Committee may increase such limit for that fiscal year only. And further, to amend revolving funds bylaw to add a new row in the chart as follows: ZBA revolving fund expended for legal posting, administrative fees and other related expenses to be funded by fees collected for such purposes.
Does this motion receive support?
Second.
Is there a recommendation of the finance, please?
The Finance Committee recommends favorably.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? All those in favor, please push the green button. All those opposed would be the red button, please. All those ballot who wish, declare the ballot box closed. There are 60 yeses, three nos. Motion carries. 60 yeses, three nos. Article 20, to see if the town will vote to accept Teresa Drive as a public way as laid out by the Board of Selectmen and recommendation, recommended by the planning board, all as the details below, to the authorize the Board of Selectmen to acquire by gift, purchase or eminent domain lands or rights in the land within said as so laid out for all purposes for which the public way are used in town of Rutland. There is a description there that I will not read unless someone asks to. Entertained a motion?
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to accept Teresa Drive as a town public way as laid out by the Board of Selectmen and recommended by the planning board, as all is detailed in Article 20 of the warrant, authorize the Board of Selectmen to acquire by gift, purchase or eminent domain land or rights in land within said way as so laid out for all purposes for which public ways are used in town of Rutland.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded is the recommendation of the finance board.
Finance Committee recommends favorably on this article.
Do I need to ask the planning board? I'll ask the planning board. How's that?
The planning board recommends state of the board.
Is there any discussion on this article?
Carol Martens, 127 Pleasantale. Is this bringing in money to us or is this costing us a ton of money?
Lyndon, Gary?
I, I mean, the, the town is accepting the road, then in such accepts responsibility in any Chapter 90 money that would come along with that, the road being the town road.
So it's a walk?
Well, I mean, it's, it's, we need to maintain the road, so sometime down the line, you know, there may be needs and stuff like that, but correct. I mean, it's, the, the town is accepting responsibility to maintain the road, plow it, any repairs in the future, et cetera.
So what is the reasoning then to do this? And what, how many people, okay, benefits to the town? How many people live on that road currently? And therefore, why was the decision made which could cost the town substantial in the future?
Right. I, I don't know, Norman, do you know the details on the road? I don't know how many houses and such.
I guess, the road is a new subdivision, a new subdivision, I think it was a case in the...
Go to the moderator. Go to the, go speak louder.
Can you hear me now?
Maybe. Yes, okay. Uh, this, uh, this road is actually a new subdivision. There, I believe, something like 12 houses on this subdivision. Those houses obviously all now pay real estate tax, which was not an income prior to the town. However, they also require the use of town services, such as plowing the roads, police, fire support, and, and that sort of thing. So there is income from it for the town, but there are also expenses. Which is greater? I don't know.
It's, it's a common occurrence that has happened for eons.
I didn't know it wasn't that great.
Is there any other discussion on this article? Is there any other discussion on this article? Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please vote yes. All those opposed would be no's. All those voted who wish, declare the ballots closed. 51 yeses, 16 nos. Motion carries. Moving on to Article 21, to see if the town will vote to accept Woodside Ave. and Sonoma Circle as town public ways as laid out by the Board of Selectmen and recommended by the planning board, all as detailed below, and authorization of the Board of Selectmen to acquire by gift, purchase or eminent domain lands and or rights in land within said the way as so laid out for all purposes of which public ways are used by the town of Rutland. The description is below.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to accept Woodside Ave. and Sedona Circle as town public ways as laid out by the Board of Selectmen and recommended by the planning board, as all is detailed in Article 21 of the warrant, and authorize the Board of Selectmen to acquire by gift, purchase or eminent domain land or rights in land within said ways as so laid out for all purposes for which public ways are used in the town of Rutland.
Recommendation of finance, please?
Finance Committee recommends favorably on this article.
Is there any discussion on this article?
Michelle Van Reet, 230 Ternock Hill Road. I believe this subdivision isn't quite done yet, and Woodside doesn't go through the way it's planned, and I'm wondering if we should wait until the subdivision is complete according to the towns, what the town is expecting before we start accepting more roads. I know, I think we accepted a couple of roads in the subdivision already, but I'd be cautious that we don't piecemeal it and make sure that all of the work gets done there before we accept any more roads there.
Is there any further discussion?
Megan Rokeyke, 17 Pry Lane. Approximately, how many houses are in this new, these two new recommended roads?
Go to the mic, please. Did everyone here know him in 27? He believes. Is there any other discussion? Is there any other discussion? Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please use your green buttons. All those opposed would be no's. All those voted who wish, I will declare the ballot box closed. At this time, it says 34 yeses, 36 nos. Motion is defeated. At this time, Article 30, 22, to see if the town will vote to accept Woodside Ave. and Oakley Circle as public ways to lead as laid out by the Board of Selectmen and recommended by the planning board, all as detailed below, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to acquire by gift, purchase or eminent domain or rights in land within said as so laid out for all the purposes of which public ways are used for the town of Rutland. The description is below.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to accept Woodside Ave. and Oakley Circle as town public ways as laid out by the Board of Selectmen and recommended by the planning board, all as detailed in Article 20 of the warrant, and authorize the Board of Selectmen to acquire by gift, purchase or eminent domain land or rights in land within said ways as so laid out for all purposes for which public ways are used in the town of Rutland.
Norman, you made a, it should be Article 22. You did not say the word Article 22.
Yeah, there was a correction.
Oh, okay. Correction. My paper says not a correction.
So it's, it's Article 22, just clarification of what Norman just made for a motion. Does this motion receive support? Second, recommendation of the finance, please.
Finance Committee recommends favorably.
Is there any discussion on this article?
Michelle Van Reet, 230 Ternock Hill Road. I believe this is a same, another part piecemeal of this same subdivision, so I hope we vote no again.
Marilyn Sedoti, 48 Glenwood Road, planning board member. Just like to clarify, it sounds like there's a question as to the construction on this development. It was split into, in the design of the development, it was split into three sections. This is actually part of the, the second section, and the planning board is certifying really that the, the work on the second section that we're responsible for, which is basically road construction and, you know, basically road construction anyway. The planning board is certifying that that work is completed.
Is there any other discussion on this article?
Jen Ledger, Joanna Drive. Just a question, if this doesn't go through and get accepted as a road, what does that mean for the maintenance of the roads? Do they not get plowed? Do they not get emergency services? Because there are people living on these right now.
The approval agreement that we have on this subdivision maintains that the builder is responsible for maintenance of the roads, including snow removal and so forth, until it is accepted by the town. I, I guess I would have to say that it might be a, I don't really want to say, a, a difficult thing to enforce that beyond the point where we have determined that the town, that the roads have been constructed properly and are acceptable to the town.
Marilyn Sedoti again. I believe I heard that you were, part of your question was emergency services. Emergency services are provided to the development at this point. It will not affect the, you know, if you have a fire, fires, trucks are going to come and ambulances are going to come at this time.
So just to make sure I understand, if we don't accept it, the builder is still responsible for the maintenance of the roads, but that's going to be difficult to enforce if they're essentially in working order? So really, the only way to maintain those roads is to accept them? To get, to have anybody actually take action on it.
Mr. Kelleher?
Can you hear me? Okay. Like Marilyn does say, yeah, emergency services are always provided, and there is stipulations in the acceptance, or I'm correctly, if I'm wrong, that if the town would have to go in and clear snow and ice in the winter time, then the builder is charged or fined a certain amount. Obviously, and it's happened in the past, if fire, ambulance, police were not able to get there, they would certainly call the town, and we would get them in there during an emergency situation.
Okay. So if it doesn't pass, again, they would still get cleared of snow and whatnot in the winter, that would be charged back to the builder.
That would go back to the builder.
So the town wouldn't essentially still be paying for it without it being an accepted road?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion on this article? Is there any other discussion on this article? Is there any other discussion on this article? Hearing none, all those in favor, please use the green button. All those opposed would use the red button. All those voted who wish, declare the ballot box closed. There are 32 yeses, 39 nos. Motion is defeated. Moving on to Article 23, to see if the town will vote to accept MGL Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 22G, in any city or town that accepts this clause, real estate that is the docile of a person but is owned by trustee or conservator of other fiduciary for the person benefit if the real estate would be eligible for exemption under the Clause 22, 22A, 22B, 22C, 22D, 22E, and 22HEF. Wow, that's a lot of 22s. If this person were the owner of the real estate.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to accept MGL Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 22G.
Motion made and seconded recommendation of the finance, please.
Finance Committee recommends favorably on the article.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article?
Joe Becker, 18 Crestview Drive. I hope I'm not alone, but can I just have a layman's turn on what this is doing?
There's a lot about 22s. How's that? Is that Gary Lyndon? Town Council?
Mr. Moderator, through you. Essentially, this is a section that allows if, if a person would be entitled to a veteran's exemption, but this is owned by a trustee or conservator or other fiduciary for the person's benefit, then it is still eligible for exemptions under the 22s.
Is there any other discussion on this? Is there any other discussion on this? Is there any other discussion? All those in favor, please use your green buttons. All those opposed, please use your red buttons. All those voted who wish, I declare the ballot box closed. 64 yeses, three nos. Motion carries. Moving into Article 24, to see if the town will vote to accept the provisions of MGL Chapter 53, 9A, to provide that final date for obtaining blank nomination papers for nomination to town offices shall be 48 weeks, days, hours prior to the hours on which nomination papers are required to submitted to the register of voters for certification or take any action in relation thereto.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to accept the provisions of MGL Chapter 53, Section 9A.
Does this motion made and seconded recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends favorably on this article.
Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Is there any discussion on this article? Hearing none, all those in favor, please use your green buttons. All those opposed, please use your red buttons. I think we're going to start at 4 o'clock more often, folks. This seems to be going relatively smoothly here.
You cursed this.
Maybe I shouldn't say anything, right? We got a few more to go.
Don't touch the money.
All those voted who wish, I declare the ballot box closed. We've got 58 yeses, and we have 10 nos. Motion carries. Moving on to Article 25, to see if the town will vote to sum with a sum of money for the water and sewer retained earnings for the project that recovered the current resident, residual management system and at the water filtration plant and update operations going forward to comply with the state and federal requirements. to comply with the state and federal requirements.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $75,000 from water and sewer retained earnings, water and sewer free cash, to fund a project that recovers the current residuals management system at the water filtration plant and updates operations going forward to comply with the state and federal requirements, including all incidental and related expenses.
Does the motion receive support?
Second.
Recommendation of the Finance, please.
Finance Committee recommends favorably on the article.
Is there any discussion on this article? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by using the green button, all those opposed would be using the red buttons. All those voted who wish, I declare the ballot box closed, we have 61 yeses, 8 noes, motion carries. Moving on to Article 26, to see if the town will vote to amend the town zoning bylaws by deleting the Section 8B in its entirety and placing it with a new Section 8B attached hereto and incorporate here with, or take any action relation thereto. If no one has any objections, I really have no desire to read this much. If there are questions, I will answer them, otherwise I'll entertain a motion.
This is a citizen petition.
That is correct. Do we know who put the petition in? Is there someone here that wrote this petition that chooses to come forward? Do you want to make your motion? So, at this time, that was a so moved, Mr. Mark Sinkewich? Is that good enough? I asked, the gentleman made it without coming up, I just wanted to clarify it. He said so moved.
No, he needs to come out and give his name.
Is that good enough?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, I'm going to ask for a second, is there a second? Mr. Kevin Briggs seconded it, is there any recommendation of the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends favorably on the article.
Favorably.
Favorably.
Is there any discussion on this article?
Yes.
Please proceed with, Carol, he was first.
Carol Martens, Pleasantale Road, I did read through this, it's still really confusing. I want to make sure on something like this, that we got lots of teeth in it, because this kind of thing can go awry. I would recommend voting against it, if it was me, until we really do a lot more research.
Thank you, Tim Gibson, 94 Glenwood Road, and I also do not support this, I believe that the current regulations that are in place are adequate for home businesses, I believe that this loosens the restrictions, or allows more expansion than I believe should be in a residential area. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion on this article? Is there any other discussion on this article?
Could someone just summarize the difference?
Oh, Mark, can you summarize it? Can you come to the podium probably, please? Mr. Sullivan's just looking for a brief summary of the changes.
I think what the major differences would be, would be the, with the amount of property, if you had more than three, because you could have more, you know, no more than three employees, you know, then if you had more property, you could have more employees, depending on size of your property. I think that was more the most of the major change of it. You know, whether, when they grant a special permit, the board would consider the size of the lot, proximity of the neighbors, you know, in their decision. And it would expire upon the transfer of the property of the business. I think it was more, more the size of the property and the amount of employees, with more property, you could have more employees, pretty much.
I think Mr. Sullivan's have it.
Hi, just Kevin Jarvey, 80 Hillside Road, Mr. Sullivan, in my opinion, as I saw the previous major home occupation, there were a lot of businesses in town that are trying to start, get going, some that have been here for a very long time, almost none of them complied with our current major home occupation bylaw. So, what this did was bring things back into 2022, so to speak, and is allowing for some of these businesses to continue on. If some of the businesses in town today were to apply for it, they could very well be denied. So, the adjustments that were made help for some of the existing businesses to now move forward, apply for these major home occupations, and make it a legitimate business within the town, and allows the boards to approve the major home occupations. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? There's a lady moving before you moved.
Jen Ledger, Joanna Drive, if either with these for business purposes, does the town receive any revenue from these major home occupations?
I believe the answer is no, they're shaking their head no.
Okay, thank you.
Tim Narwald, 149 Palmagussit, to be frank, I'm speaking as a citizen, not as a Planning Board member. My issue with this is, is that I think it should be properly run through, like we said many years ago, through the Bylaw Subcommittee, and let that be worked out, and led to what Carol had said earlier, all the just work out of it and all the points, so that's why I'm against this as a citizen. I believe it should go through the proper channels of going through the Bylaw Subcommittee and then brought before the Planning Board since the zoning bylaw, and at that point, it could be moved to the floor for a town meeting. Thanks.
Is there any other discussion on this article?
Desiree Megham, 10 Arlene Drive, I'm worried about if I support this, my neighborhood could possibly change. I moved here to a small town, to a quiet neighborhood, and I believe this opens it up for any of my neighbors to start a business, and I would have more traffic through my neighborhood, and my kids wouldn't be able to drive their cars, their little wheels, they have the battery-operated cars, and the, their bikes and things through my neighborhood. I'm worried that, this does say something about signs that they won't be illuminated, but I do support home businesses, but if it doesn't always, if it doesn't bring any revenue to the town either, then I feel like I'm not really helping my town by supporting this. I'm just worried that I'm not going to live in a zoned, properly zoned, community anymore, and that my neighborhood is going to be a business residential area instead of a residential area, so that I can go drive to the center of town for the zoned business area, as I had hoped when I moved here.
Is there any other discussion on this article?
Sheila Divto, 19 Palmagussit, I'm struggling with this one, because I believe the core of this is really good, and I agree that it's a process that should have gone through more review. This is not something that saw initial legal review, it did have, I believe, the one public hearing, but this is a big deal, and I think we have a small group here tonight, I would have liked to have seen more review of this. We know why this came up, this should never have come up the way it did, we saw some personal attacks happening on certain businesses, so this should never have come up here the way it did with a citizen's petition. I guess I would ask, I don't want to leave the citizen who presented this in a tough spot, because I guess what I'd love to know is, is the Planning Board planning on taking this up officially in the very near future? And, you know, if this doesn't happen tonight, what happens next?
Planning Board, choose to comment.
We have not discussed at this point, taking up a review of this, however, I would say that if there is sentiment that we should, we certainly could start with the Bylaw Subcommittee and take a hotter look at this, or a similar proposal.
Is there any other discussion at this time? Is there any other discussion at this time? Legal counsel's just giving an opinion to the Planning Board at the moment. This will be a two-thirds vote when we choose to vote. You didn't post it as a meeting. You didn't post it as a meeting.
Yeah.
Oh, was it on your agenda? Whatever you want to do. You got, Kevin, Kevin, they're going to talk here for the Planning Board for a moment. Mr. Sullivan, do you choose to make a comment that won't affect the Planning Board's talking?
Oh, I don't think I'm going to affect them. I guess my question is perhaps to legal counsel, if this gets defeated, is there like a two-year wait before it can come back?
Mr. Moderator, through you, if the Planning Board didn't support this when it came forward, then, and it's defeated, it's a two-year bar on being resubmitted, however, it is the same bylaw for the two-year bar, so any major or significant amendments would make it a different bylaw, and it would not be prohibited from coming forward.
Okay, well, I guess I just, I ask that so that the citizen's petitioner is aware of that, and if he chose to try to work with the Planning Board, he could perhaps consider whether he should move forward with this or withdraw, so he doesn't have that two-year
Mr. Moderator, down here on your right, I'd like to make a motion that we take a 10-minute recess, since we're way ahead of schedule in your eyes, and the Planning Board can discuss this properly, and we can figure this out before we act on this.
Motion's been made and seconded to take a 10-minute recess to give the Planning Board some time to think. All those in favor of a 10-minute recess? All those opposed? Okay, you guys can go to the, motion carries for a 10-minute recess. Darren's 10 minutes are up, folks, please take your seats.
Yeah, they're just, they're just lost. Yeah, I'll be sorry.
All right, so the recess is now over.
Too much sugar.
I would believe we would like to hear the recommendation of the Planning Board before we have any further discussion on this article.
Mr. Moderator, I move that we refer this Article 26 to the Bylaw Subcommittee of the Planning Board for review.
So, that's a motion? A motion has been made and seconded, is there any discussion on this article? On the motion? He's referring it to the Subcommittee?
Bylaw.
Bylaw Subcommittee?
Planning Board.
Planning Board, Bylaw Subcommittee. We have computer difficulty. Is there any other discussion on this motion? In the motion, the motion is only on Norman's motion.
Don't we have the original out of the form?
We do.
Will we have that on that first?
No, we have a motion.
This is classified as an amendment, Mr. Sullivan.
We have people here to get us out of trouble.
We can do a voice, a voice one if you want me to, if that helps you. The amendment will only be a majority. The mouse went missing on the computer screen, which means nothing to me, but I don't know, as long as it didn't run by my legs, we're okay, I guess, but. It's a pretty Mother's Day flower right there, I think. Are you going to go find the mouse, Mr. Sullivan? All right, while they're trying to find the mouse, I'm going to just take a voice vote. Do I hear any objection to a voice vote, just to continue to keep this moving along?
What are we voting on at this time? I'm really confused what we're voting on.
The motion?
What Norman said?
Yes. It's an amendment, to send it back to the Subcommittee of the Planning Board to do it, is what Norman said, and that's the motion that's on the floor, that's what we're currently having discussion on, looking for the mouse, but we're going to take a voice vote on that at the moment. There's a lot of pretty things happening on this screen right here, but we're going to take a vote. All those in favor of the amendment that was made by Norman to send it back to the what they just said, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Now the main motion.
Now, we're going to go to the main motion.
Which is?
As amended.
To refer to Subcommittee.
To refer to the Subcommittee, it's the same motion that was just voted, correct?
Mm-hmm. No, it's majority, majority.
And that only needs majority, is what legal counsel says. Is there any further discussion?
I'm sorry, isn't that what we just voted on? Are we voting on the same thing again?
Yeah, because it's an amendment, so it changes it, that's all. Is our mouse working? Mr. Ted Purcell?
Does this require two-thirds vote as stated?
Negative.
Mr. Moderator.
This is majority per.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes.
Because this isn't approving a zoning bylaw, it's instead just referring this to a committee for further study, it's just a majority vote. If we were voting on the zoning bylaw amendment, it would be two-thirds. This is not that, it's just to refer to committee, which is essentially to say, we want to allow this to be heard sometime again in the future, and we want the Planning Board to take a look at it.
Does that answer your question, Mr. Purcell?
Darren Rust, the people that brought forth this petition, are they in favor of this before we move on?
The nod has been yes. Is there any other discussion on this going back to a committee? Otherwise, all those who wish for it to go back to committee, please push the green button, all those opposed, push the red button, this is a majority vote, not a two-thirds All those ballot who wish, I declare the ballot box closed, 65 yeses, 10 noes, it passes. We're going to move on to Article 27. To see if the town will vote to amend the Rutland zoning bylaws and zoning map so as to change the zoning district from R60 to business for all the properties as shown on the attached segment of the Town of Rutland zoning map, attach hereto and incorporate here with being all the land between the northwest side of Wachusett Street, from Glenwood Road to East County Road, and all land between, on the southwest side of East County Road, between Wachusett Street and Glenwood Street, and all the land between the between Wachusett Street and Glenwood Street, and all the land between the east side of Glenwood Road and the southwest side of East County Road and the northwest side of Wachusett Street excluding such land on East County Road currently zoned as light industrial slash office or take any action in relation thereto.
We wish to take no action on this article.
Refer to committee.
And refer to committee?
Yes.
Wait a minute.
Okay.
You can if you want to, if that's what she's saying. Similar to what just happened with that, Mark, I believe.
Yes.
So just restate the motion.
We refer to take no action and refer to committee.
Does this...
Refer to committee. Refer to committee.
Just, you just want to refer to committee?
Yeah. Refer to committee.
Does this motion receive support?
Yeah, second.
Second, Mr. Ross, is there a finance committee recommendation?
Finance committee recommends unfavorably on the article.
Unfavorably on the article.
On the original article?
Right.
Point of order.
The one that's in the warrant.
So just clarification, the finance committee recommended unfavorably on the original warrant, so it's really not unfavorable of what the current motion is, just to be clarified.
Absolutely.
Correct? Is there any discussion on this? Is there any discussion on this? Is there any discussion on this? Correct me if I'm wrong, this is just majority, not two-thirds. If there's no other further discussion, we are going to vote. All those in favor, please press the red, the green button. All those opposed would be the red button.
What are we voting on?
This current motion.
As written here?
There's nothing, no. What I read, Mr. Sinkelich, who is the citizen petitioner, has asked for it to go back to the planning board committee as the previous motion did. So all you're doing is kicking Mark's current information back to the planning board to be considered to be brought forth with more investigation instead of a citizen petition. It is Article 27.
Mr. Moderator, no action.
He just recommended...
He's referring it back to the committee is what he's asking to do. That's all that's really being said. Do you understand that?
His motion was to take no action.
Darren? Darren? She said we can't say that, so that's why we're using it back to committee, town council. Okay? Is there any other discussion on this? Is there any other discussion on this? Is there any other discussion? Just clarification. Article 27 is going back to the committee to be reviewed again. All...
If we vote yes.
If, if we vote yes, that is correct. Those that want to go back to the committee, use the green button. Those that don't want it to go anywhere, hit the red button, please. All those with, ballot who wish, I declare the ballot box closed. Article 51, yeses, 22 noes. It's going back to the committee. Mark, don't go far, probably. To see if the town... Oh, this one isn't his?
No.
Oh, you can leave then. To see if the town will vote to amend the zoning, Rutland zoning bylaw by adding to the Article 3 of the zoning bylaw of the use of regulations, Section 10A Village District, subsection B for uses allowed by right in the VC District. I would like a new section added to include automobile sales and repairs, motorcycle repairs and sales. Is this person here to?
So moved.
So moved. Who stated that? Can you identify yourself and address?
Sean McLaughlin from 75 Barrett Paxton Road.
Thank you. Does this motion receive support? Motion's made and seconded. Recommendation of the finance board.
Finance committee recommends favorably on the article.
Favorably on this article. Is there any discussion on this article?
Can we just, Carol Martens, Pleasantale Road. I am confused as to where, is, this is the map, right, that we're talking about?
That was 20, that was an article ago.
Okay, this one, okay, oh, okay, so, sorry, no wonder we don't have it. Oh, yeah, this says 28 on here, on the other side. And this is 28 we're talking about. Where is this? Whoever did this, can you tell us really where it is in town?
Can you, can you come to, over here to the mic, please? Can you come to the mic, please, so everybody can hear you clarify? She'd like to know what section of town it is. She's not clear on the map by the sounds.
That's what I want to know. I want to know how much of this is new. How much of this is new that you're talking about versus what already was blue?
No, this is, this is all that.
Okay, so this was already blue, so what are you talking about changing to automotive, et cetera, et cetera?
Just automotive, because it doesn't specifically say in the bylaw.
That you can do automotive.
Right.
Okay, but you're just saying it, allow us to put automotive in addition to candy store or whatever.
Right, because there's a mobile there, there's already businesses there.
Thank you.
Jen Ledger, Joanna Drive. Question, if this were added, is there anything in there that states as far as, again, aesthetic appeal, how many vehicles?
Can't hear you.
Sorry. Is there anything that would be added as far as what it looks like? Like, we just, do we have a lot of empty, of vehicles just sitting? Is there any, you know, rules or regulations on what this needs to look like or?
I would assume the planning board is going to state where he's moved.
Our, our regulations include a procedure that would require site plan review for approval of any of these, and there are requirements regarding lighting, distances, parking, and that sort of thing. I hesitate to use the word aesthetics simply because, you know, someone might say, you know, I don't like a purple sign, so, you know, you have to make your sign green, and we couldn't get into that kind of thing.
But, I guess my...
Come closer to the mic, please, so everyone can hear you.
I, I think my, my bigger concern is if, if this were added, they'd still have to apply for a permit and have everything approved, whatever we need to. They wouldn't just get the okay and be able to put a whole bunch of cars on an empty lot, for example.
Then there certainly would be conditions of approval.
Okay.
Did everyone hear what Norman said? Norman, can you get up and talk closer to the mic as I ask, please, so everyone can hear it?
There would be conditions of approval as a result of the site plan review.
So, Mr. Moderator, my question is pretty simple.
No, well, name and address, please.
Mike Sullivan, Crawford Road, sorry. When I look at this map, the intersection of Pleasantale Road and Barrett Paxton Road, 122, there is a large swath of, I don't know whether it's senior housing condos or whatever there that was recently built. So is what we're saying that in that complex, they could do auto repairs and motorcycle repairs?
Sales.
Yeah. Well...
The answer is, anywhere in the Village Center District, they could apply for a site plan review to put that in.
The answer is, yes, anywhere in the Village Center, they could apply with a piece of property to do, to put a auto or repair, or motorcycle repair that would require site plan review in that area.
So, so that includes the large condo complex or whatever it is?
It's a major for most.
Well, I guess, I don't know, I find that a bit troubling. To me, this is another one that perhaps should be referred to the review board for consideration because I certainly think it would be unfair of the, I don't know, there's got to be, what, 30 or 40 units there? If one person decides out in their front yard, they're going to start repairing motorcycles or cars. It just doesn't seem fair to me. So I would recommend this go back to the committee.
Maryland Sidoti Planning Board, it's my understanding that this gentleman lives just at the outside of that boundary on 122 going towards Paxton, and that's what he's asking to do, is to extend the boundary, you know, a few, I don't know how many hundred feet, but it's not going to be, you know, in the existing district. And as I say, he came to the planning board quickly, and that's what I, I understood. And also, there are repair businesses going on in that area.
Joe Becker, 18 Crestview Drive, I'd, I'd like to actually suggest the same thing that Mike did, but in the form of a motion if I could, or an amendment. So I'd like to put on a, on the floor an amendment to refer Article 28 to the planning board bylaw subcommittee.
Does this motion receive support? You only can ask a question about going back to the subcommittee at this time.
I want to ask a question, I want to clarify some things. Number one...
Is it?
It is in the district. It's not outside the boundaries of the district. That's number one. Number two, there's no condominiums in the district. There's, there's 10 do, townhouses right next to Pleasantale Road. They're townhouses, they're not condominiums. And there's only, there's 10 of them. It's Fox, Fox Run Estates. I just wanted to clear that because people are misunderstanding this. It's within the Village Center District, which there's other businesses there, the mobile, it's a business, and there's no condominiums there. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion on the amendment? On the amendment?
I can't talk about...
No. Yes, I do. You're only talking about the amendment, please.
I think this, Desiree Mangum, 10 Arlene Drive, I think this refers to the amendment. Do we have to have this same discussion on amendments like this, referring it to the planning board every time somebody wants to create a business in the residential, or a business district or a light industrial area? Is this the pattern that we have every time we have a meeting now? Or, this is what I, this is what I'm questioning.
Well, let Mr., maybe Mr. Becker should answer that where he made the motion, or do you want a planning board person to answer that? I mean, clarify if I'm wrong, Mr. Becker wants due diligence checked on it by the planning board before just a citizen petition. Is that a fair statement? Norman, you choose to comment on it as well?
The, the situation is a little bit different in that someone is looking to allow a, a business that was not permitted under the current bylaw. If a particular business in this, let's say, Village Center District is allowed specifically in the bylaw, then there would be no need for it to come before town meeting for approval. That would strictly be a planning board or possibly a ZBA decision.
Okay, so my question is, every time I drive through towns, there's always some kind of car dealership somewhere. You see one in Holden as you're driving down 122. This is 122, so it makes sense to me that there could be a car dealership in Rutland on 122. So it doesn't make sense why a car auto repair wouldn't be part of the bylaw, wouldn't be one of the businesses that is an option under the bylaws. And what kind of businesses are approved under the bylaws? And what are we going to have to start looking at again as a town every time a business wants to open up on 122, which appears to me to be a very busy road? Does that make sense? I mean, I'm just wondering what kind of businesses, are we, are we going to be here every time a business comes up and says, we need to add another type of business to a business district or the light industrial district?
Mr. Moderator, through you. So anytime that a use is allowed by the bylaw, then that particular activity is allowed subject to whatever other approvals might be needed, as the planning board just said, from the planning board or from the, from the zoning board. When something is not listed as allowed, in order for it to go forward, there has to be somewhere where it says it can be authorized. And that's what this article was doing. That is a decision for town meeting. That's about how the land should be used. Once that decision's made, if it's yes, then you go back to what we talked about earlier, go to the planning board, ZBA, whatever it is. But the town regulates its own districts. Holden, for example, regulates it however it wants to. Zoning is just local.
I'd also like to add that this has already been, this has already gone before the planning board, and the planning board has voted on it. Just so the people of the town are aware, it's already been before the planning board. And I believe they voted unanimously to allow it, so...
It's my understanding that if the planning board wanted to put something forward, they would have made the article themselves. The fact that this is a citizen's petition, to me, means it's not necessarily something that they would have done on their own, and I would recommend voting favorably on the
So I just want to clarify one thing that I said. I mentioned condos, and I'm apparently in error there. If, if they're townhouses, it doesn't make any difference to me if this, I think he said there was 10, that means this, I think they're duplexes, so there's 20 units there. It, it's troubling to me that we're going to rezone that particular parcel to allow automobile or motorcycle repairs. I just think that's very unfair to those residents to be, you know, categorized that way. I, I understand, you know, there's a, there's an old gas station across the street, that's appropriate, perhaps some of the businesses up the street, those places are appropriate, but that one group of townhouses, it, it's just, to me, it's, it should go back to committee. So I support Joe's motion.
I'd like to clarify this as well, that there are the townhouses there, as you're aware, and it is not changing the zoning. The zoning is already there. It is just that within the zoning bylaws, it doesn't specifically say auto sales. That's all it is. They already have businesses there. All, all they're doing is amending it to say auto sales. The zoning is already there. So it's not changing the zoning at all.
Is there any other discussion on the amendment? The amendment? No. Go ahead.
Leah Whitman, 208 East County Road, not as a select board member. I have a question for planning board. Is this the only Village Center District zoned in Rutland? So this amendment would apply to all the Village Center districts in, zoned in town, correct? So, so I think that there's this one at Pleasantale, which I think is the topic of conversation tonight, but would also apply to the one, I think it's at the town line, Hubbardson, Rutland Hubbardson Town Line also. So just, okay, thank you for that clarification.
Is there any other discussion on the amendment that's before us at this moment? Does everyone understand what the amendment is? To summarize, Mr. Becker made a motion, and it was seconded to go back to the planning board committee of some sort.
Bylaw Subcommittee.
Is there any other discussion? And this is majority, not two-thirds, majority, to go back to committee. All, do you want to use that mouse?
I am using it.
All right, we can use our mouse. All those in favor of going back to the committee, please use the green button. All those that don't want to go back to committee, use the red button. All those voted who wish, I declare the ballot closed. 46 yeses, 25 noes. Motion, the amendment, carries. Now we will vote on the article with the amendment, which is virtually the same thing. That, is there any discussion on the same amendment we just had a moment ago? Otherwise, we're gonna have a motion on the article with the amendment. It hasn't changed, Mr. Sullivan.
So, just for point of information for the citizen's petitioner, if this passes, he's not gonna be able to bring this back for two years, is that correct?
No.
No.
Oh, it's because it's going to committee, so he's already, okay, so he's...
Okay.
Is there any other discussion on this article? Is there any other discussion on this article? Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please use your green button. All those opposed will be the same, yellow, red button, I guess.
You just said...
It's getting, it's getting late, you know, it's after 6, so... All those voted who wish, declare the ballot box closed. 48 yeses, 23 noes. Going back to the committee. Going on to Article 29. Article 29 is, the moderator will appoint his new finance board members. The finance board members that will be reappointed are the two that are expiring this year. It will be Peter O'Malley, who will be reappointed, as well as Ted Purcell, who both, have both chosen to help the finance committee going forward. Is there any other discussion that come before annual town meeting at this time? If not, I encourage everyone to go to the annual election, which is on Monday, and polls are open from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., and please get out and vote if possible. Thank you, everyone, for coming.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?